In our A. Those in dumber terms don't know what that means, the dudes coming in with long rifles. That's what means Nick Rovrakly ass gonna get dealt.
What you say? But, uh, who is it?
I was giving a test.
Yeah, we think about all the one reason why we, uh, why, why they purchasing. But I want to know what is this for? This is a public here. Uh, man being chapter fifty going by the minute section twenty-three, fifty, twenty-five, thirty, thirty-seven, fifty-nine, forty-three. What is it? How you gonna have? How you gonna have a public here? You're. And they give them asberry, asberry some more money. Yeah, they are. They give them some more money. Yeah, I worked with. Hey, uh, general residential zone district requiring, uh, additional criteria and requirements for the two of you system bring innovation district. Hey, man, they ain't had no more. They come to the committee and tell you like this. You know how Suzanne Wilcox, the captain of the room, just come to the committee and tell you.
I'm not.
I, I don't.
Kind of proxy, kind of proxy.
I actually know what you're about.
Yeah.
Man, that's crazy.
Why you scared? What the hell we ever did? We never done.
They already got into where we made rebuild houses and bring it on. Nobody's enough, not enough. And it's trying to bring in green innovation or bring money into the environment to be green. Put it back to traditional so that we can get, uh, traditional.
I know, I see.
What they do?
Oh, yeah.
We don't. Y'all. Yeah. Yeah, yeah.
He didn't sure that I ain't home on the. The crowd came to nothing. I was carrying the water. It was her mission. It's her mission.
Looks good though. Still looks good.
Oh, okay, so that's not, that's not the same.
No, no.
The time is now four thirty P M. On Monday, November twenty-fourth. I hereby call the special affairs committee meeting to order. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Hey, Mister, sorry. Mister Alamein is not in. Doctor Lewis is not in. Ms. Johnson is not in. Ms. Priestley is not in. Ms. Winfrey Carter is not in. Ms. Burns is not in. Ms. Mashat?
Present.
Mister Pfeiffer is not in. Mister Jared is not in. Ms. Priestley.
Secretary.
You have two members present.
Sir, that is your first warning. You are being vulgar and you are being called to order. You are also yelling out, which is disorderly. You are being called to order. Next, public speaker, Madam Secretary. Next speaker is Audrey Mohammed.
I wish I had working clocks so that way we could see and calculate our time. So I'm gonna be as quick as I can. Last meeting, we established that Liddell Lewis do not like black folks because she uphold the whites.
What you say? But, uh, who is it? What you say? But, uh, who is it?
I was giving a test.
Yeah, we think about all the one reason why we, uh, why, why they purchasing. What you say? But, uh, who is it?
I was giving a test.
Yeah, we think about all the one reason why we, uh, why, why they purchasing. But I want to know what is this for? This is a public here. Uh, man being chapter fifty going by the minute section twenty-three, fifty, twenty-five, thirty, thirty-seven, fifty-nine, forty-three. What is it? How you gonna have? How you gonna have a public here? You're. And they give them asberry, asberry some more money. Yeah, they are. They give them some more money. Yeah, I worked with. Hey, uh, general residential zone district requiring, uh, additional criteria and requirements for the two of you system bring innovation district. Hey, man, they ain't had no more. They come to the committee and tell you like this. You know how Suzanne Wilcox, the captain of the room, just come to the committee and tell you. I'm not. I, I don't.
Kind of proxy, kind of proxy.
I actually know what you're about.
Yeah.
Man, that's crazy.
Why you scared? What the hell we ever did?
They already got into where we made rebuild houses and bring it on. Nobody's enough, not enough. And it's trying to bring in green innovation or bring money into the environment to be green. Put it back to traditional so that we can get, uh, traditional.
I know, I see.
Right, yeah. What they do?
Oh, yeah.
Y'all. Yeah. Yeah, yeah.
He didn't sure that I ain't home on the. The crowd came to nothing. I was carrying the water. It was her mission. It's her mission. Hey, I'm just.
He also. He also. Looks good though. Still looks good.
Oh, okay, so that's not, that's not the same.
No, no.
No.
The time is now four thirty P M. On Monday, November twenty-fourth. I hereby call the special affairs committee meeting to order. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Hey, Mister, sorry. Mister Alamein is not in. Doctor Lewis is not in. Ms. Johnson is not in. Ms. Priestley is not in. Ms. Winfrey Carter is not in. Ms. Burns is not in. Ms. Mashat?
Present.
Mister Pfeiffer is not in. Mister Jared is not in. Ms. Priestley. You have two members present?
We have two members present.
Well, they left it a mess because they. Because we cut that, we, we cut those scrap. So we were all over there and took up all the rocks and patio roots or whatever was left. And now we can't, we can't get in there with that because like seven, they stick it out.
I've got flooding, I've got, maybe. Yeah. There you go. You got those. Thank you. I know what you're hearing. You got, you got the hair. Well, the guys are all, they got nothing. We're both, I think we're both evil.
Different, like different situations.
I'm a hot guy. I don't, I don't have. She, she's.
So you probably. You want, you want to just tell everybody.
She's gonna pay me if I don't see it all works out.
She's, she's.
Not that she, once she, once she, her face gets red and her eyeballs are bucketed and I'm just glad I'm with that, but she get out here. Just get out.
Oh, yeah.
I said if you wanna carry a rap.
Yes.
Um, Madam Clerk. If we can, um, go ahead and do another roll call, please.
Okay, it is four thirty-eight P M. And we will redo the roll call. Mister Alamein?
Present.
Doctor Lewis is not in. Ms. Johnson is not in. Ms. Priestley?
Present.
Ms. Winfrey Carter?
Present.
Ms. Burns?
Present.
Ms. Mashat?
Present.
Mister Pfeiffer is not in. Mister Jared?
Present.
You have six members present?
We have six members present. It is now time for the reading of the disorderly persons city code subsection. Any person that persists in disrupting this meeting will be in violation of Flint City Code section thirty-one dash ten. Disorderly conduct, assault and battery, and disorderly persons and will be subject to arrest for a misdemeanor. Any person who prevents the peaceful and orderly conduct of any meeting will be given one warning if they persist in disrupting the meeting. That individual will be subject to arrest. Violators will be removed from the meetings. Are there any requests for agenda changes and or additions? Seeing as how there are no requests for agenda changes and or additions, thank you. It is now time for public comment. Members of the public who wish to address the city council or its committees must register before the meeting begins. A box was placed at the entrance to the council chambers for collection of registrations. No additional speakers or slips will be accepted after the meeting begins. Members of the public shall have no more than three minutes per speaker during public comment with only one speaking opportunity per speaker. First public speaker, Madam Clerk.
Thank you.
First speaker is R.L. Mitchell.
Hello? It is on. Hello, my name is R.L. Mitchell. I live at seven fifty-nine East Linden Avenue. Uh, for the record, Happy New Year and Merry Christmas and Happy gobble gobble Thanksgiving Day to all the peoples in America, especially in New York. With this election being mayor, the guy, you know who he is. But, and another thing, what about them Lions, Detroit Lions last night? Yeah, there you go. Like, uh, and another thing about Flint ain't too far behind, like them guys, uh, the third ward council lady gave them picture. But they gotta go through high school first. I think they know the ropes to keep from getting hurt before they get in the game because you see how the, the po-po try to, to break, break them up before they even make it to after leagues and stuff. But they been so much, if Flint had its own football game quick too, like a professional. But anyway, what I want to say this about Grand Treble's Restaurant, we got that and, and we don't have to worry about the situation in Flint because this is the last council meeting until, until the new year. I mean, we gonna get stuff together, but the dude twenty-six years old in Canada, he holding up the game over the, the door highway of the water department. He got to come over and educate them forty other people for, for Mister Moore can talk English. They always jumping on Mister Moore because he, fellow busting around with, with Chief Green, holding them back and the council lady in seven ward talking that stuff then we can't hardly get nowhere because she interrupt every now and then talking about hater, player hater, whatever she talking about. Jumping on Woodson and, and all, talking about she, anyway, enough about talking Mr. Shaq. That's just like wasting time talking about her because she, and another thing about the fifth ward council lady. You see, evidently, the first ward guy is still here because she made a new rule. You don't get rid of another stalemate because the council, he gotta quit on his own if he want to quit. Like last week, y'all zoning the peoples and zoning peoples out, peoples don't know what's going on. They said, we, we had a council meeting and I see the first ward is still here thanks to the fifth ward with that, they really looked up. And then Ty's aunt talking about, he might as well stay home and collect the check because he thought the first ward was checking the check and nobody checking him until he read the, the rules what the fifth ward lady made when they tried to kick Maze out and Madam Burns. And you know, you gotta follow the rules. Robert rules order. Welcome back, sir, first ward and, oh, heck, you come down, third ward, welcome, okay, all right, stay doing, America.
Next public speaker, Madam Clerk.
The next speaker is Arthur Woodson.
Good evening. Miss Gurley, Attorney Gurley. There's a lot of stuff going on here in the city of Flint that, that isn't right. I know that you had, uh, a thing where you had to investigate for forgery about Michigan tribunal taxes. Somebody forged the signature and nothing ever came out of that. Uh, you never brought that up front. Uh, I'm trying to figure out how to, uh, for it, uh, to try to get that information, uh, because I know it happened. Also, Neighborhood Engagement Hub. Twenty-four thousand dollars was paid out and the city wouldn't reimburse Neighborhood Engagement Hub for first ward councilman Leon Alameen because they said it was his business they got the money. So Neighborhood Engagement Hub is on the hook for twenty-four thousand dollars. And it was all this house is done. The reason why I keep on repeating it is because I do not like the fact that Councilman Alameen is going around saying that I'm lying about what's going on at the Neighborhood Engagement Hub. When we both know that everything that I said is factual. So, uh, either ask the city attorney, is it true? Ask the city administrator, is it true? Ask the CFO, Mister Moore, did they reject reimbursing the Neighborhood Engagement Hub twenty-four thousand dollars? I mean, the councilwoman Priestley is the chairperson of finance, opera fund, but it's good to see that the city caught it. That lets me know that the city's doing their job. I speak bad about the city all the time, so I can also speak good about something that they've done. So that leads me to believe that they are really looking into, uh, contracts that come before them because they were the ones that caught this right here. Thank you.
Next public speaker, Madam Clerk.
The next speaker is Janice Jackson.
Good evening, my name is Janice Jackson. I am Kiki's mother. Good evening, my name is Janice Jackson. I am Kiki's mother. Um, I'mma ask again, when are y'all gonna wake up? Y'all got Curious George over here, AKA Leon Alameen, AKA Leon Abdul Alameen. When is y'all gonna wake up and get him up off, off this council? When is y'all gonna wake up and see that he's a woman beater? When is y'all gonna wake up and see that he is a child beater? When is y'all gonna wake up and see that he is a predator? When is y'all gonna wake up? What it's gonna take for somebody to get killed, hurt? My thing is he doing all this, you know, wait a minute, I want to bag up because the last time I seen that you was making those faces. And I did, I, I looked it up. You is, you're Curious George, that's what you are, a monk, a straight monk. They don't have no respect for no women, no kids, nobody. And the thing is, I think you mad because I am a strong black woman. I am Kiki's mother. I will be there every step of the way with Kiki. And then again, I want to ask you this, did you have anything to do with Eric Bays? Since you got all these life insurance policies, you got one on my grandbaby, you got one on my daughter. I want to know who else you got one, the dog down the street. You just a sorry piece of shit. Excuse my French to everybody else, but I'm talking straight to this monk.
Excuse me, ma'am. You have a right to, um, voice whatever opinions you would like to voice. However, I will ask you to refrain from using vulgar language. Go ahead and start her time.
Again, again, I'mma say this, whenever you ready to see me, like you jumped up in your seat, like you had maggots in your tail, whenever you ready to see me. You know where I live at? I'll be sitting waiting on you. You know where I work at? I'll be sitting there waiting on you because you, you not gonna do what you did to Kiki to me. And every time a man stand up to you, you run. You a coward, you can't take the pressure. But I tell you one thing, this ain't what you want, baby. But I tell you one thing, this ain't what you want, baby. This is not what you want. And I'mma see you.
Madam Clerk, you said that was the last public speaker?
No.
No, okay, sorry about that. Next public speaker, please.
The last speaker is Diane Thornton.
Diane Thornton, fourth ward. I just wanna let you guys know that, um, for all those people that have donated to the Color of Law Coalition for our backpack, for the homeless is being very successful. We are, have been out there giving the backpacks and feeding them hot meals as well. And I just wanna thank everybody that has donated and, um, the donations are still coming in and we're still doing the work. So I just wanted to take the opportunity to, to thank everybody that has donated and, and have wanted to help and, um, like I said, we're still taking donations because the need is real. So, um, like I said, uh, we have a Facebook page and you can reach out to us that way or the members that are here in the council at most meetings. So, that's all I got to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Chair, um, excuse me, Madam Clerk, you said that was the final public speaker, if I heard you correctly this time?
Yes.
Alright, thank you. It is now time for a council response. Council members may respond once to all public speakers, only after all public speakers have spoken. An individual council member's response shall be limited to two minutes. Is there anyone who wishes to speak during council response? Seeing as how there's no one who wishes to speak during council response? I'm sorry, I didn't see you. Uh, Councilwoman Johnson, you have the floor.
I'd like to thank everybody for coming out.
With only one speaking opportunity per speaker. Madam Secretary, who is our first public speaker?
First public speaker is R.L.
Good evening, council. I'm R.L. Mitchell. I reside at 759 East Linden Avenue, over by the graveyard called Grace Line, where the Houston let black people be buried there, but my mommy and daddy was buried there right at the gate. And I, and I just wanted to put that on record. So, uh, about the situation in Oak Park, we the people appreciate you for saving Oak, you peoples, you council people saving Oak Park over there on, on the north side, over there where the, uh, the job corps at. And, and, and the fireman that always, he, he retired, but he came back on the force to, to make sure we Flintstone have the right employees in Flint to, uh, make sure we put the right chemicals in the water department over there. And, and make sure we have the right, what we under, you know the fire chief, you know who he was because he say, you know, my brother, Jack Allen Mitchell, not Jackass Mitchell. Because he, the fireman, all he got, he got a way of putting his words to make media talk about us Flintstones in Flint and all the stuff like that, arson. They blowing up the churches now and nobody found that can, the gas can, but the big dark guy, uh, Woodson, Woodson, and the, and the, Chief Green came and find, that's how Flint we coming. We got thirty churches and Flint gave that Peterson guy twenty thousand dollars apiece and we went down and floored him and bought him a big house, uh, over two hun- three hundred and fifty thousand dollars, yeah, million, I can't do too much figuring, but time he got the money, he went and he trying to make every preacher concerned pastor look like okie dokeys. Because they, uh, mad because they, they don't have to pay no income tax. And the land bank, they just let the land bank have their way, but the land bank can't deal with the churches because we got militant past, some militant pastors in Flint, but they ain't, they ain't showing their cover yet. Maybe they'll show their cover tonight when you push them the wrong way. Like you push Tarzan the wrong way and he got two strokes and she ain't here today. First ward, second ward, and third ward. Whoever heard of such a thing? Tried to jump on the eighth ward councilman and him and his brother and he had, and the guy that got caught two strokes and he still came back and the dude getting paid big time, talking about choking peoples and, stay tuned, New York, we, we might get, we really gonna get paid tonight. R.L. Mitchell, please message.
Stanley Wood.
Good evening. I missed you guys the last couple of weeks. I've, uh, been enjoying some vacation, but, uh, I have been watching online while I was on vacation. I wanna say I'm proud that there was five people here to have corn right at, uh, five o'clock, actually four fifty-nine, but we aren't gonna complain about a minute. As far as the presidential material here, we don't have a lot to choose from. I know we're, uh, stuck in a stalemate, but I don't believe the second or the seventh council members are proper examples of leadership. They're condescending, they're vile, they give off negative energy. Uh, I think it's time to maybe give somebody that has, uh, the most seniority. I mean, that's the way it works in union positions and a lot of places, uh, at, at work. Uh, maybe it's time to give Ms. Winfrey Carter a chance. I wish the city clerk was here tonight. I was gonna bring up her mistake that costed Sandi and Brooke a one-year probation term. I think that's not acceptable. That was a mistake of the city clerk because she couldn't read something and she didn't do anything about it. And then, of course, you know, they got their warnings and they were told to be arrested and things like that. That is not acceptable. I personally will be reaching out to them and giving them an aim of a good attorney. Unfortunately, they had a, uh, public defender, so that don't help you much. They're just looking for a quick, who can we, uh, get to make a plea real quick? So, the one thing Judge Maribel did say is he asked them where they lived and they said they lived in Burton and he said, "Well, why are you going to Flint City Council meetings?" Everybody has a right to be in these meetings. I don't care if you're from Flint or if you're in the outside area. We're all affected by what happens in the city of Flint, the local areas are. I had some, some words for, uh, Lion Leon the felon tonight, but he's not here. But after my wife talked to me, she said, "What you're about to say, is that gonna help the city move forward?" And it's not. So I'm not even gonna bother saying these things, other than his credibility is horrible. He filed his, I think, tenth PPO order now and lied on page three when it says, "Have you ever filed a PPO against any other party?" He clicked no. Clearly, that's a lie. Last thing, Judy, I know you acknowledged the last, uh, meeting that, um, basically including all those committees, we're gonna limit the, the amount that the people can talk.
Next public speaker, Claire McClintock.
Good evening, council. I'd like to address two issues. Number one, I would like to encourage the council to go on and pick leadership. We have too many issues that we're confronted with. And, uh, I would suggest you consider Winfrey Carter as the senior council person on this council. Our previous leadership, our president and vice president, regardless of what the reasons were, they have communicated to this public that they have no respect for residents. We wish we would be treated like Ashley Capital representatives and community first and other big people that come down here, they don't get the police called on them. And none of that, even though the things that they ask for is to the detriment of the residents. But we come down here and pour our hearts out over the frustration through the experiences that we have had and we get the police called on us. We get arrested, we get put out, da-da-da. I think that is a reflection of the past leadership. Now let's give the senior council person a chance to not only lead this council and reset the, 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 the things that are done against residents. To put it on a new track, let's go into a new year with a new attitude and perhaps the new leadership can help bring y'all together. That would be a, that would be something, wouldn't it? And, uh, the other thing I wanted to talk about was, uh, the failure of this council to have addressed the rate hike of the water back in February. And I did learn recently that the council didn't know about the meeting of Gleewa back in February, where it was the one item on the agenda and Gleewa, as we know, we get our water from Gleewa. And they had a meeting, a public meeting, and it was only one item on the agenda. And that was the rates of water rates and none of our council people were there to speak for us. And I learned recently that the council didn't know about it. So I would suggest that the council write a letter to Gleewa and make sure they let you all know about the meetings. And then we use an opera funds to pay for the raise in the water. It's ridiculous. Thank you.
Last public speaker, Sarah Houston.
Good evening, council members. Sarah Houston, sixth ward. Just wanna know, what's the process? I guess, I still don't see interpreters here. You say that it's not in the budget or we gotta put it in the budget, but I see resolutions for the budget and I may just be ignorant and uneducated. So I'm asking for, what's the process? How long is this gonna take? What's the holdup? It's really a simple phone call, so I don't understand what's going on with that there. So please help me to understand that. I'd like to publicly acknowledge Arthur, uh, Woodson, who's not here tonight, for providing interpreters at his, uh, town hall that he had for cancer. And he didn't even talk to me about it, I just happened to see that on the news. So I was really proud to see that, for him making that effort. I'm also concerned about the multiple fires that are happening in our city, the multiple killings that are happening in our city, and I'm wondering if there's anything being done to investigate an arsonist. There is an obvious arsonist in the city of Flint and that concerns and worries me. I don't really have too much more to say than that, other than, you know, I would like a response to what is the process on what's taking so long to make a simple phone call to get interpreters in. Thank you.
That was the last public speaker.
Thank you for everyone who came out and spoke. Um, it's now time for council response. Council members may respond once to all public speakers, only after all public speakers have spoken. An individual council member's response shall be limited to two minutes. Does anyone like to speak?
Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
Thank you. I do want to, um, Ms. Houston, uh, on Monday, I will set aside some time to make sure that we get you an answer. We will make sure that happens in special affairs. Um, and then as far as, uh, the arson that's happening in this city, I do know that they are actively working, um, to catch the persons because it's, it's more than one person responsible. There's no rhyme or reason for why people set fires. I know that sometimes people take the attitude of, oh, they were tired of having, uh, dilapidated houses next to them, but they also don't think of the risks that come along with that. And so, because we understand that people may be frustrated with the appearance of a building, uh, that sparks, uh, illegal behavior. So one of the things that we're also going to do Monday, myself and Councilwoman Priestley, the land bank will come before us on Monday and they will give a presentation. They are going to talk about what's happening with the money that was given to them for demos, where they are with their demos. And if you all have any other questions that you would like to have answered, please let, um, one of us up here know and we can add that to the, um, list of things we would like for them to speak about. But as it stands right now, there will be a presentation from the land bank on Monday to discuss, uh, because a lot of the property is, um, their property. And so, that, I think that will also aid us in figuring out what to do about arsonists. But on Monday, we will also get an answer as far as the interpreter. Thank you, Madam Chair, I yield.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
Thank you. Thank you for everyone who came and spoke. It is cold out there, so it is an effort that, um, you have made to be here and I want to make sure I acknowledge you. In regards to Ms. Houston, um, we're waiting on the clerk. She's not here today, she's at, um, professional training today, so she cannot be here. But we're still seeking an answer. I know her, her date, I believe, um, was for next year, but we've asked, you know, before then. And the other issue was how would our cameras, um, they would have to be with our techni- our IT to have a camera that is just fixated on the person, because the cameras move, they're nice, there isn't like a stationary one if there was, you know, if a person. So there, there has to be some, um, some thought going into it. Um, in regards to the arson, um, in May, I asked the Flint Fire Chief, "What are we doing because we have a problem with arson?" He stated on record, "Nothing." We do now know, all these homes are not land bank homes. Some of them are private owners, a home on Hamilton, two of them were by private owners. Swanson's was owned by Swanson's, it was not owned by land bank. And so, we look at all of the different ones, we've had a problem with arson for a long time. So if they, I have not heard of a plan, seen a plan during budget hearing, I asked of a plan. And he said there wasn't one because we had a lot then. But I do know Saturday, Thanksgiving Day, there was a lot of fires. We were out handing out food to the homeless, hot meals, and literally, uh, ML King Street was lit up with fire trucks, Rankin Street, Genesee Street. Um, so there's Hamilton all the way over to McClellan and we see it's a square area being burnt out and set on fire. And I don't think that's by accident, they're clearing it out.
Is there anyone else? Anyone else? I'll take a few minutes. In regards to the arson and, and the fires, I know that I drove down Woodrow Avenue a couple of weeks ago and saw one that started, just started, and there was homeless people living in that home and they were trying to keep warm or cooking, I don't know which, but they came running out of the fire. I think it was a total accident. I think that's what some of them are, but there are arsonists out there, we know that. And every time I go to, um, I speak to the, um, the fire chief, I ask him about it, "What are we doing?" "We've got to prosecute them and make an example of these arsonists." And I've been pushing that since the day we, I was elected, especially since the east side was, had the majority of the homes. Luckily, most of those are now gone, but there's still plenty left, plenty left. And I think that's all the, and regarding, we are working on the budget piece to, to find the funding to, to pay for interpreters because that will not be a cheap situation. And we do not have the money in our current budget to do that. So, we are working on that issue, on the interpreters. Thank you. Okay. It's now time for the consent agenda. I will entertain a motion to...
Motion to approve.
It's a motion by the councilwoman in the seventh ward to, to approve, to send to council?
Absolutely.
Is there support?
Support.
It's supported by the councilwoman in the sixth ward. Is there any separations? Are there any separations? Let's do good English here.
Madam Chair.
Yes, go ahead.
Two-five-zero-three-eight-nine.
Three-eight-nine? Okay.
And that is, um, that's it for me.
Okay, is there any other separations? Are there any other separations? Are there any other separations?
Oh, yeah, I had checked with Devina and Girlie earlier. She said it was, okay.
Okay. Are there any other separations? Last chance. Okay, so the consent agenda will consist of the following resolutions. 250402, the accepted donation from Pi Kappa Alpha Fraternity, Zeta of Alpha B Chapter, Kettering University for the Flint Fire Department. 250403, Accept Support Services Funding Initiative, Incentive Workforce Innovation and Opportunity Grant, Genesee-Shawassee-Thum, Michigan Works, Flint Fire Department. 250404, Accept Support Services Funding, Incentive, Workforce Innovation and Opportunity Grant, Genesee-Shawassee-Thum, Michigan Works, Flint Fire Department. 250405, Contract with Crim Fitness Foundation for Flint Recast Community-Based Mindfulness Trainings. 250406, Grant Acceptance, Fiscal Year 26 Budget Amendment, CSMOT Foundation for Event Policing and Public Safety. 250407, Contract with Senatorial Great Lakes Installation and Monitoring Security Systems for McKinley Center and Haskell Center Football Field. 250408, Contract with Genesee Health Systems, Flint Recast Community-Based Mindfulness Trainings. 250409, Contract with Trio Paint, General Contractor Services. 25040410, Contract, Greater Flint Health Coalition, Flint Recast Program Evaluation. 250411, Reliant Fire Apparatus of Michigan, Purchase of a Pierce Pumper Fired Apparatus, Flint Fire Department. 250411, Reliant Fire Apparatus of Michigan, Purchase of a Pierce Fire... Oh, it's duplicated. Thank you very much. I didn't see that. I was reading it, and I went, isn't that the same? I only saw one when I was, got the initial resolutions. The last one is 250415, Reallocation of ARPA Funds, St. Mark's Missionary Baptist Churches Community Outreach Center. And this is the roll call vote to send the consent agenda to council.
Mr. Al Alameen is not in. Ms. Lewis is not in. Ms. Johnson is not in. Ms. Priestley?
Yes.
Ms. Winfrey Carter is not in. Ms. Burns?
Yes.
Ms. Machette?
Yes.
Mr. Pfeiffer?
Yes.
Mr. Jared?
Yes.
Five yes, zero no.
The vote is five yes, zero no. That will, those resolutions, well, it'll go to council. Our one and only separation is 250389, Grand Extension Budget Amendment, 2022, BJA Fiscal Year 22, Office of Justice Programs, Community-Based Violence Intervention and Prevention Initiative through September 30th, 2026. I'll entertain a motion.
Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
I make a motion that we send to council.
It's a motion on the floor to send 250389 to council. Is there support? I'll support it. I'll support it. Is there any discussion? Ms. Burns, you separated that. Would you like to start the discussion?
No, because I'm not supporting it at this time.
Okay.
So I wasn't passing in the consent agenda.
Okay.
Madam, Madam Chair.
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to keep 250389-T in finance.
So there's a motion made by the councilwoman in the Seventh Ward to keep in finance. Is there support?
Support.
Support. I heard the councilman in the Eighth Ward first. All right, this is the vote to keep 250389 in finance.
Mr. Al Alameen is not in. Dr. Lewis is not in. Ms. Johnson is not in. Ms. Priestley?
Yes.
Ms. Winfrey Carter is not in. Ms. Burns?
Yes.
Ms. Machette?
Yes.
Mr. Pfeiffer?
Yes.
Mr. Jared?
Yes.
The vote is five yes, zero no.
The vote is five yes, zero no.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Did you get the supplemental information that we had requested for this?
I do not have anything.
Okay. So they're, they're gone. We need to have that information, because I didn't see it. Do they know? We, we didn't get the information. But we already voted.
Yep.
Madam Chair, motion adjourned.
There's a motion on the floor by, by the Eighth, supported by the, by the Seventh. Roll call, Madam Clerk, or Madam Secretary.
Mr. Al Alameen is absent. Dr. Lewis is absent. Ms. Johnson is absent. Ms. Priestley?
Yes.
Ms. Winfrey Carter is absent. Ms. Burns?
Yes.
Ms. Machette?
Yes.
Mr. Pfeiffer?
Yes.
Mr. Jared?
Yes.
Five yes, zero no.
The vote is five yes, zero no. We are adjourned at 5:25. I think I'm going to be able to pick up my niece myself.
Everyone who wanted to fill out a speaker slip for the next meeting, hopefully you've already filled out your speaker slips. The time is now 5:25 PM. No, nobody's getting one, Judy. I don't know. Ms. Claire, are you getting a speaker slip? Is that what you're doing? I didn't want to start my meeting if you were getting a speaker slip. Oh, well, then you should be fine, if you already have one. Anybody else? All right. The time is now 5:26 on Wednesday, December 3rd. I now call this Legislative Committee meeting to order. Roll call, Madam Secretary. Mr. Al Alameen is not in. Ms., Dr. Lewis?
Present.
Ms. Johnson is not in. Ms. Priestley?
Present.
Ms. Winfrey Carter is not in. Ms. Burns?
Present.
Ms. Machette?
Present.
Mr. Pfeiffer?
Present.
Mr. Jared?
Present.
You have six members present. We're doing legislative. It's now time for the reading of the Disorderly Persons City Code subsection. Any person that persists in disrupting this meeting will be in violation of Flint City Code Section 31-10, Disorderly Conduct, Assault and Battery in Disorderly Persons, and will be subject to arrest for a misdemeanor. Any person who prevents the peaceful and orderly conduct of any meeting will be given one warning if they persist in disrupting the meeting. That individual will be subject to arrest. Violators will be removed from the meetings. Are there any requests for agenda changes and/or additions? Seeing as how there are no requests for agenda changes and/or additions, it is now time for public comment. Members of the public who wish to address the city council or its committees must register before the meeting begins. A box was placed at the entrance to the council chambers for collection of registrations. No additional speakers or slips will be accepted after the meeting begins. Members of the public shall have no more than three minutes per speaker during public comment, with only one speaking opportunity per speaker. First public speaker, Madam Secretary.
R. L. Mitchell.
Hello, council. I'm R. L. Mitchell. I live at 759 East London Avenue in Flint, Michigan. For, for the record, about this food bank situation, over out on Flushing, we, the peoples, don't appreciate you peoples giving away our op-er money to, to the, they say, just put it in the account. But, and then you want to refuse to give it to them, because it ain't nothing but a money pot. You should have be like Salvation Army, gave about $650,000 back, because they salvation. They supposed to do it, because it's free, Salvation Army in Flint. And talk about $3,000 a truck. We got 25 trucks over there at St. Mike's, and you got to pay the, the peoples for delivering the food, and nobody, they can't figure out how to pay the, the truck drivers to deliver the food, like in Africa. They got the food, but they put it in the middle of the desert, then when their peoples go out and get the food, they start to fight and kill each other, and that what they mocking them for. That what they wanted to do. Fighting over food, and the thing that's supposed to save them is killing them. Just like that was St. Michael's become a food desert. And it was to be all that junk and burning, you see they burning up the whole square neighborhood, nobody, and Chief Green act like he don't see nothing, all that junk, just like over in New York. Drunken mayor doing all that junk up, that strategy stuff, and all that Eastern Star junk, talking about what he gonna do when he get president, and all that, and everybody talking that junk up in, talking about Assalamu Alaykum junk. You know, that junk, and everybody gonna be Assalamu Alaykum bowing down to them, blowing towers down in New York again. I'll be back, talking about I'll be back, Bin Laden. Drunken camel jockey junk. Hello, Machette, say something about that. Yeah, like that old camel jockey come up and blowed up three banks in it, in New York, and nobody say nothing about it.
Mr. Mitchell, Mr. Mitchell. I'm gonna let you continue on your time, but I'm asking you refrain from using racial slurs. Please continue.
Oh, yes, ma'am. And another thing, about the city clerk, Davina Danner, you, and she talking about the mayor's gonna send her to get some more education, before we must get this year out, she supposed to be scribbling that, that money out tonight, and, and the excuse is, I'm getting educated. That's her excuse by the man, the little man downstairs. And who, who ever thought of such a thing? I think Second Ward thought of that. Look at her over there. Now, listen here, lady. You went at McDonald's today, I mean, council, council lady, McDonald's got a problem over there in the morning tab. They ran out of, they ran out of eggs and meat, and they, they talking about, sorry, sir, you don't get food, feed today. Do something about that, honey, in your board.
Thank you. Next public speaker, Madam Secretary. Next speaker is Stanley Wood.
How do you follow that up? So a few things I wanted to discuss, that I ran out of time with. The Coalition, or the Color of Law Coalition and Thanksgiving. These people do it with all their own money and donations from people. They went out and fed a lot of people on Thanksgiving Day with hot meals, with cold sandwiches for possibly the next day. So I want to give a shout out, I'd say to the girls, but I'm one of them now, so I can't say I'm the girl. But, you know, if you guys see it in your heart, and you want to donate toward it, you know, their, their goal is to take care of the homeless or the unhoused, the drug addicts, giving them things like hats, scarves, socks, gloves, meals. We're trying to do some camping tents now and some sleeping bags. We have a homeless problem here in Flint. We have a drug problem here in Flint. Nobody will deny that. Like I told you, I wasn't here for the last few meetings, enjoying my vacation, but I want to say I'm happy that the North Flint Food Market opened up. I'm happy that another resolution come to give them some money. I was happy to see that. I wasn't in favor of it while they were still trying to build, because it was many years in the works, and who knew if it was going to open or not? But now that it opened, I wish them nothing but success. My only concern is there's a reason that was a food desert in that area, and a lot of that has to do with theft. Hopefully, they can combat that there, figure out some way to take care of that. The St. Mark's vote at the last meeting, I was very disappointed in the Second Ward Councilwoman telling everybody, yeah, I'll work with this, and we'll work through this, and then to have you vote no. That was really disappointing. The current leadership, like I said in my first thing, I think is inadequate. They've proven over the last year and a half, almost two years, that they don't have that leadership quality. And like I said, I mean, based on seniority, let's give Winfrey Carter a try. I mean, it can't be any worse. And the last thing is, don't think that you haven't heard anything from INA for the culture that they went away, because they haven't went away. You'll see something coming up soon. They're going to start fighting for the residents, but unfortunately, Judd has to get through his court case, as far as I'm concerned, a legal court case. But, you know, we'll see what that holds.
Next public speaker, Madam Secretary. Next speaker is Claire McClintock.
Again, I want to underscore the challenges that we face here in the city of Flint and across the country for that matter. The civil rights that we've enjoyed since, for years, is being jeopardized now before the Supreme Court. Pretty soon, the last vestiges of the Civil Rights Act is being challenged. Pretty soon, we're gonna go back to Dred Scott. The Dred Scott case, which said, a black man does not have any rights that a white man is bound to respect. Dred Scott, look it up. But we're also facing the issue of the working class and poor people don't have any rights that the rich people is bound to respect. That's where we're heading now. And you all have an opportunity to try to reverse this dinosaur of, of humiliation, exploitation, and oppression that's going on here in the city of Flint and elsewhere, and you are in the position to change these things. We can come up here and just complain and appeal to your better angels and ask you to stand up for our people. Stand up for the residents. You work for us. We forget that. But when the well-connected in this city come up here, they get all the respect in the world. They never get put out. They never are told, how dare you ask for a $72 million tax waiver and things like that? That's all fine and dandy. But when we ask for $16 million for rehab homes, so that we can get some of these homeless people out of these vacant homes, living in the shadows, they're not seen, they're not heard. And we've got to have a change in the leadership here in this city to even talk about these things. So I'm hoping again that you will consider Winfrey Carter, who's the senior. We not talking about this camp and that camp. You all outdid yourselves last time, because you're usually five and four, and that time you was three, three, and three. Wow. You don't, you done split yourself some more. So let's give her an opportunity to see, can she be a fresh face on the council to lead this council? Thank you.
Next public speaker, Madam Secretary. Next speaker is Sarah Houston.
Thank you very much. Thank you for your responses back to me. Thank you, Ms. Machette, for saying that you were going to lead the charge on Monday. I truly appreciate that. I think that you forget that I'm a sign language interpreter myself. This is my job, it's what I do. It don't cost that much. It don't cost, I did the math, actually, it, it's not going to cost more than $60,000 a year to provide interpreters for eight hours a week, if y'all can get at least, you know, I've said four hours on Monday, four hours, and I think that's a lot. I think that's doing, that's overdoing it. So don't give me that crap. I get so sick of people talking about it costs too much, but it don't cost too much to buy pens and paper and office supplies. These are people who need access to what's happening in their city, and I am tired of that being your excuse. They're not that expensive. Again, this is my job. It's what I do. Talk to people who don't know I know. Don't appreciate it. Thank you all for your time.
Was that the final public speaker, Madam Secretary? Last speaker is Rich Jones.
All right. Thank you.
How y'all doing today? My song is over three minutes long, so I'll just play that late. But anyway, I left one of these up here. But, uh, anyway, I left one of these up here, it was my flyer that I have. Uh, we're doing a fee sixty on Christmas Eve, I need some support. That's on the flyer, and then also, uh, I'm doing a It Ain't Just You concert. I'm still gonna do the No More Tears concert, Tanya, but I decided being that this is gonna be inside, I need to change the name, and plus I had a dope design on the tee shirt, so I was like, I'mma go and change the name for this one, but the, uh, No More Tears concerts will be coming back again this summer, but I'm gonna do this one on March the fourteenth. And it's gonna be entitled, uh, It Ain't Just You. And I'm about to play y'all some lyrics from my opening act.
Thank you. I believe you said, Madam Secretary, that was the final public speaker, correct?
Yes, it is.
Seeing as how that was the final public speaker, we will now move on to council response. Council members may respond once to all public speakers. Only after all public speakers have spoken, an individual council member's response shall be limited to two minutes. Is there anyone who wishes to speak during council response?
Madam Chair.
Councilwoman in the sixth ward.
Um, I'mma take some time to speak about the homelessness, and it is overwhelming, it's heartbreaking, because they are Stanley, they're not trying to be seen. They are not trying to be seen. So the ladies went out, um, you weren't there, but you are part of the group. Um, and I'm gonna say this group of individuals work really hard. You have Diane, Debbie, Tanya, Beverly, Taylor. Um, Tanya brought her husband, um, and put him to work. And you don't, I, I did not, I knew we had a homeless problem, I did not know how much. Um, Thanksgiving, I changed my plans to not eat with my family, but to go out to hand out hot food with them. And, um, the backpacks with Narcan in them, um, with toiletries in them, things that they need, and blankets. Um, people literally came out of buildings, we ran across one guy who lived, was over in the fourth ward by Gersley. Showed us the, the pockets where they're living, and they, it's a whole community that trusts each other. People poured out of these buildings that when you ride by every day, you don't see them. You don't see them, some have broken out windows, they're boarded up, they don't have, they need coats, they don't have boots. Today, one of the guys could not go to Saint Marks to get help for therapy because his feet were frozen. His feet were frozen. And so when we look at this, it is, it's a lot. So the Color of Law, uh, ladies and gentlemen, do a lot of great work, and it is with their money. And it's a group that was started to serve good in this community. That they took, I'm gonna thank them as we all went out, um, giving up their Thanksgiving to make someone else have one.
Thank you, is there anyone else who wishes to speak during council response? Seeing as how there's no one else who wishes to speak during council response, are there any requests for agenda changes and/or additions? Hearing none, oh, sorry, I went backwards, sorry. It is now time for the consent agenda. What is the pleasure of the body? There's been a motion to move the council by the councilman in the eighth ward, is there support? Supported by the councilwoman in the fourth ward, are there separations? Uh, councilman in the eighth ward, I think I heard him first.
I'm gonna separate two fours, or two five zero four one four.
Are there any other separations? Hearing none, the consent agenda will consist of two five zero four one three dash T, which is the Code Amendment Ordinance, Chapter fifty zoning map. Roll call, Madam Secretary. Dr. Lewis?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson is not in? Ms. Priestley?
Yes.
Ms. Winfrey Carter is not in? Ms. Burns?
Yes.
Ms. Moushak?
Yes.
Mr. Pfeiffer?
Yes.
Mr. Jarrett?
Yes.
You have six yes, zero no? There, six, six yes, zero no, uh, the consent agenda moves to council. Moving on to Resolution two five zero four one four dash T, which is the lone separated in last item on this agenda this evening, which is the Code Amendment Ordinance, Chapter thirty-five Personnel Article Five Working Conditions. What is the pleasure of the body?
Madam Chair.
Councilwoman in the fourth ward.
Send to council.
There's a motion to send to council, is there support?
I'll support for discussion.
Um, it's been supported by the councilman in the eighth ward. Uh, is there a discussion?
Madam Chair.
Councilman in the eighth ward.
Um, obviously, nobody from the administration is here to discuss this. Um. I would like to know what the budget implications are of this before we look at this further, and, um. I don't know that the day after Christmas is a holiday for anyone. So, I, I don't know how we can, we can put this on for, I mean, the banks are open. Mail runs, like the day after Christmas. Like, to me, that's not a, that's not a holiday, so, uh, and the day after Thanksgiving is very questionable, so I'd like to know the budget implications and, uh, why the day after Christmas is, is part of this resolution, so at this, or at this, this ordinance, so at this time, I will not be supporting this. Um. Obviously, I'm, I'm willing to leave it here if, uh, if we can get some answers to that, but other than that, I'm not supporting it, thank you.
Thank you, is there anyone else who wishes to discuss?
Madam Chair.
Councilwoman in the fourth ward.
I want to thank, um, our councilman in the eighth ward for addressing the same concerns that I had before I got to it, um. The, one of my other problems with this is that the banks are open, other businesses are open for business. Um. The only time I've ever gotten those days off myself is when I worked for a school. And, um, the day after Thanksgiving at my last job, we did get paid extra for working that day. And we didn't get paid if we didn't, but it was not a mandatory day to work or not, it was your own choice. So, um, I can't support it in its current form. I, I find it questionable whether it's something that the residents would want us to do, because that's their day off and they can come down and transact city business. A majority of people who work at GM and others, but not many people have those days off anymore. Thank you.
Thank you, is there anyone else who wishes to speak in the first round of discussion? Seeing as how there's no one else, I will take my time to my colleague in the eighth and fourth ward, I can answer any questions you have because this was introduced by me. I do want to address the first thing, councilman in the eighth ward, if you read five, six, seven and eight, um, with the day after Christmas, it's only if it falls on a Friday, it's not any other time. Um. And so, if you go back and read like what the consecutive days are in this, and then as far as, and, and with the day after Christmas, while I will push forward, I am also flexible on the day after Thanksgiving. I do hear what you all are saying, but I also want you all to be mindful of city employees. And the fact that they work the day before Thanksgiving. And then on Thanksgiving Day, they do not have an opportunity to really spend time with their families because they're probably still preparing meals, still trying to travel, still trying to get things done. Thanksgiving always falls on a Thursday, which means that next day will be a Friday. Um, we have looked at the traffic that we get here in the city as far as people coming in, paying bills and taking care of business. The day after Thanksgiving, it just does not happen. It, it's, it's, it's rare, I'm not gonna say it doesn't happen at all, but the numbers are very low and it's very slow. Um, I think that, and I, I appreciate everyone being mindful of business and people needing to handle it, and if that traffic that was coming into the building supported it, then I would not have introduced this. Uh, I think another thing we need to look at, and Ms. Priestley, I do hear you and I understand, but just because something was done to you doesn't mean you have to do it to someone else. I think we are in positions to give people reprieve, and so maybe we should look at doing so. I do hear everyone's arguments, um, as to, excuse me, not arguments, I hear everyone's concerns about why they don't think this is a good idea, like I said, with the day after Christmas, um, it was just thought of if Christmas was on a Friday, and if you read that, that's what it says here. I, I do understand, like if Christmas is on a Tuesday or Wednesday, whatever, then they come to work, that's fine. But my, my biggest thought here was the day after Thanksgiving, and I was here in the building, I was here in the building the day after Thanksgiving, last year and the year before that. And so, we're not seeing, um, enough people coming in or attempting to even do business on that Friday, they're still at home, they're still relaxing. And so, this, for me, was introduced be considering our employees that work here. And again, the fact that on that Wednesday before, they are at work here. And then, on Friday, they are able to take the Friday off, but then they have to use PTO, which is like, come on now. I do hear you on the budget thing, I wish they would have stayed because they knew that this was on here. So I wish they would have stayed to discuss the budget implications. However, I do believe that, um, budgetary wise, we will be fine with doing the day after Thanksgiving. Um, I want to push for the day after Christmas, if it is on a Friday, because again, you're going to deal with low traffic, so this isn't just the day after Christmas if Christmas is on a Monday, or for some day other than Friday. Um, but I, I welcome to hear more of your thoughts on this, but I, I just think this is a gesture that the council can do for our employees who are here, and we all received the emails, we received email after email after email. Where we had to read the fact that our employees were told, uh, you better be here even though the building is closed. And so they have to come to work. Um, and I'm, I would not ever suggest that, that they came to work, it was because, um, that they didn't do any actual work, but I will tell you that that does a lot for morale, when you have me sitting here for eight hours and the amount of people that may or may not come in is maybe thirty minutes worth of people, if that. Um, that there may not be phone calls that happen. Uh, and then also to say that they have to use their PTO, again, I wish they would have stayed so we could have talked a little bit more about the budget, but I believe that the way our budgets worked out, that it can be a paid holiday the day after Thanksgiving. Um. I'mma say it one more time, is the consideration is the fact that on Wednesday, the day before Thanksgiving, they are here. And so at five o'clock, when they get off work, everything else is shut down or shutting down, and they're rushing to get things done, rushing to get things accomplished. Thursday, the actual day of Thanksgiving, if they have not started cooking before or stayed up all night to cook, that doesn't leave them very much time with their families, and so this is just us offering them that Friday for them to spend time with their families. Because a lot of times, the traffic is not here, coming into the city for people to handle business, because people are at home with their families still. Still doing other things, still doing shopping, or whatever, whatever they may be doing at that time, they're not necessarily coming to the city in droves to handle business, I yield. Is there anyone who would like the floor in the second round of discussion?
Madam Chair.
Councilwoman in the sixth ward.
Did you check with the county and the other municipalities to see what they do? Because I know we, Flint has some days, we're not in sync with them. And I don't know if you looked at those, the county, um, and then did it, did they give you a cost? For paying, and how many employees it would affect?
So, um, but there was supposed to be some materials or something sent that I never received. And so, I don't have the answer to that, and I thought that they were going to stay for this discussion so that we could have, uh, the discussion.
Cause it is, it is dead in here.
It's dead in here, the day after Thanksgiving.
I've been here during the Christmas season and it's dead.
Yes.
But, uh, and I do have concerns about, um, the, the part with the budget.
I do, I think that is a valid concern.
I give, I, I, that's it for me.
Is, is there anyone else in the second round of discussion?
Madam Chair.
Councilman in the ninth ward.
Um. Do you know, or can you share, um, level, it says level twenty-two B? Where, or who is that, or what levels would that be as far as, I'm assuming that's, that's grading for positions? Do you have a feel for what that looks like? As far as what? I hesitate to use the word class of persons, but who, who, who are twenty-two Bs?
That part, I'm not sure, what I would ask my colleagues to do, um, is if we could move this to special affairs so that the questions can be answered, because we're coming up on Christmas, and so even if we don't agree to Christmas, that's fine. But if we could move it to special affairs where the, um, administration will be here to be able to answer the budgetary questions, because that, that is a concern. Um, if they can answer the different classes, if they can answer how this might affect any collective bargaining, I will be happy to do that, and if once it gets there, if we say, hey, just send it back here for some tweaking, or if we say, hey, only Thanksgiving and take Christmas off, I'm fine with that as well. But I just want to give the administration a chance to answer, especially since we're coming up against another holiday, so if we could consider moving it to special affairs?
Yeah, that's something I think we can consider. I also, um, would share yes with the concern for budget, but I all, I, and I, I do and can appreciate the fact that we want to be and give consideration to our staff. Yet the staff is there to service the members in the community, whether it be one that come in a given day or one thousand. So, have we, and I know that, uh, you know, part of the, the statement has been, well, yes, they can request the day off, but it's use of their PTO. Well, that's part of also benefit of providing PTO is that they get to use it when they want to use it, and if this is one of those days that they choose to use it. I'm assuming the day after Thanksgiving and the day after Christmas are not blacked out where you cannot request those days off. That would be my assumption. Uh, but maybe we give consideration to, um, absolutely providing that as an option while ensuring that there is minimal staffing for those few, uh, community residents that might come in to use services. I, I just don't want, I'm concerned about shutting down and not providing the residents access to services. That's, that's a, in part a concern.
Thank you, is there anyone else in the second round of discussion, councilman in the eighth ward?
To, to my knowledge, this, this is only going to be for a certain employee, right? So, the, the police officers and the firefighters, the day after Christmas isn't gonna be a holiday for them. So, everybody in, everybody's essential when in government, as far as I'm concerned, if they're not essential, then they shouldn't be part of the, like, if they're not essential, they shouldn't be here. So, I, I mean, how can we say that a secretary, a non-essential secretary or whatever, is getting a paid holiday, but the police and fire have to go out and work? They don't have the, the Friday after to spend with their family or, or, I mean, they're working Thanksgiving too, so how can we say that, uh, you know, a secretary gets to stay home, but the police and fire don't get any extra benefit? but the police and fire don't get any extra benefit for working the day after Thanksgiving, the day after Christmas? To me, it it's it's not, it's not something that that makes sense at this point in time, not for not for our current situation. I mean, with all the collective bargaining, everybody's in sixteen hundred or or seventeen, whatever. That is, now we're talking about changing collective bargaining by this. I'd be interested to see what the administration thinks. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the second round of discussion?
Madam Chair.
Councilwoman in the fourth ward.
You know, I'm I'm the daughter of an essential worker. She was, my mother was a nurse. She worked every other holiday. And I learned how to make a turkey when I was in middle school because she had to work the next day and she was the first shift worker. So my dad didn't do it, I did it. She never, she got to, she came home at four and that's when we ate. So that's the time she had to spend with her family. And sometimes she had to work the next day and sometimes she did the next. You you do what you do for your job. I'm not against people having the time off. I just don't know that it's appropriate for the city. And when we're dealing with collective bargaining, as previously mentioned, and how it affects everybody, and we have our our police officers and our fire department and 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 when we gave pay to essential workers, we included all of the, I think, everybody and all the city employees who had to work received. We have sewer and water, people working. They're essential employees to maintain our system. So I just cannot support this as it is. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the second round of discussion? Seeing as there's no one else in the second round of discussion, I'll take my time. I hear what you both are saying. And Mr. Pfeiffer, by your assessment, that means no one should have Christmas off, no one should have Thanksgiving off. That means you should be here on Christmas and Thanksgiving. That means you should be here the day after Christmas and the day after Thanksgiving as well. You see, as council people, we have the option to, if we didn't get a chance to spend time with our family the next day, we cannot come in here and we're still going to get paid anyway. And so I'm simply saying that when we talk about our employees and when you talk about, and Mr. Jared, I hear you. I I do agree. I'm not saying that there isn't one resident that isn't important. But what I am saying is when we talk about the time ratio, the if the whole point of a holiday is to spend time with your family and we're telling them to come in the day before and they're working all the way up into that holiday. So they don't, and then they're rushing and trying to do things last minute. Then you have that holiday where they're rushing and trying to do different things and spend time with family, and they don't even really get that time or that pause. And then the next day is a Friday in which they are coming in and you have five, ten people that come, but we're telling you, you have to be here eight hours. And not only are we telling you you have to be here eight hours, we're telling you, you have to use your PTO to do it when, again, I agree, PTO is for people who need the time off. But what if I've had to use it because someone was sick? What if I've had to use it for other reasons? What if I'm new here and I don't have eight hours' worth of PTO? I think that there are just a lot of things that go along with this. And so that's why I'm asking that we give this a chance to go to special affairs. We have this conversation with the administration. If there are some things that need to be amended, fine. If it passes, fine. If it fails, fine. But I just want us to give our employees here an opportunity to know that we see you, we understand that you do not have the same option as this council to where if you decide, you know what, I didn't get to spend enough time with my family on Thursday, so therefore on Friday, I'm going to do that. Or I didn't get a chance to rest, or I'm tired, or I didn't get that pause. I just think that we should give them the opportunity to do that. Additionally, Ms. Priestley, I hear you. And oftentimes, we share personal stories while we're up here. And we say, this happened to me and that happened to me. But I'm sure you didn't want to have to learn how to make that turkey, but you had to. I'm sure the same way, you didn't want to have to wait until your mother got off work, if she got off work on time. The same way, I'm sure you didn't want your mother to have to go to work, but she did. And so it was her profession, it's what she chose, it's what she did, it's a sacrifice that your family had to have so that we could hear that story today. What I'm telling you is if we have an opportunities that twenty years from now, somebody else doesn't have to tell that same story, so because we allowed our employees to have that time off, let's give it to them. Let's let's do it. I mean, there are a lot of struggles that we had to have or former generations had to have that they don't have to have if we're sitting in this position. We don't need to continue the generational struggle. I'm just asking that we move this to special affairs. I ask, I make a motion to move this to special affairs. It's been moved and probably supported by the councilwoman in the sixth ward. Roll call vote.
Dr. Lewis is not in. Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Priestley?
No.
Ms. Winfrey Carter is absent. Ms. Burns?
Yes.
Ms. Machette?
Yes.
Mr. Pfeiffer? Mr. Jared?
Yes.
You have five yes, one no.
The vote is five yes, one no. This resolution will move to special affairs. That was our final resolution.
Motion to adjourn.
There is a motion to adjourn. Is there support?
Support.
It's moved and probably supported by the councilwoman in the sixth ward. Roll call, Madam Secretary.
Ms. Priestley?
Yes.
Ms. Winfrey Carter is absent. Ms. Burns?
Yes.
Ms. Machette?
Yes.
Mr. Pfeiffer? Mr. Jared?
Yes.
Dr. Lewis is not in. Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Six yes, zero no.
The vote is six yes, zero no. The time is now six oh six PM on Wednesday, December third. This legislative committee meeting is adjourned.
I didn't get them all.
Yeah.
Like a twelve to three? Noon is back against people time.
The time is now six oh seven PM on Wednesday, December third. I hereby call this Government Operations Committee meeting to order. Roll call, Madam Secretary.
Mr. Al Alamin is not in. Dr. Lewis?
Present.
Ms. Johnson?
Present.
Ms. Priestley?
Present.
Ms. Winfrey Carter is not in. Ms. Burns?
Present.
Ms. Machette?
Present.
Mr. Pfeiffer?
Present.
Mr. Jared?
Present.
You have seven members present.
We have seven members present.
We have seven members present. It is now time for the reading of the Disorderly Persons City Code subsection. Any person that persists in disrupting this meeting will be in violation of Flint City Code Section thirty-one dash ten, disorderly conduct, assault, and battery in disorderly persons, and will be subject to arrest for misdemeanor. Any person who pretends the, excuse me, who prevents the peaceful and orderly conduct of any meeting will be given one warning. If they persist in disrupting the meeting, that individual will be subject to arrest. Violators will be removed from the meetings. First, it's now time for a request for agenda changes and or additions. Are there any requests for agenda changes and or additions? Seeing as how there are none, it is now time for public comment. Members of the public who wish to address the city council or its committees must register before the meeting begins. A box will be placed at the entrance to the council chambers for a collection of registrations. No additional speakers or slips will be accepted after the meeting begins. Members of the public shall have no more than three minutes per speaker during public con comment. With only one speaking opportunity per speaker, first public speaker, Madam Secretary.
Ariel Mitchell?
Hello, I'm Ariel Mitchell. For the record, do you, Madam Chair, Candace Machette, do the lady, Ms. Priestley, the one who got the money up, who passing out the money in Flint and don't want to? Ms. Priestley, I heard you say your your mother on Thanksgiving Day took time out to cook you a turkey and and talk about you can't do the business because after the day after Christmas. And that's what's going on in Flint right now. At Flint Gen Genesis, people's on strike, supposed to be taking care of sick peoples and stuff. And I want an investigation about that situation out of Genesis. This is because they moved from Flint out there and they don't know how to deal with Flint peoples who come in there because they be sick and they all want to, I want to, because my uncle, he was sixty-seven years old. He stayed on Flint Park, I mean, Flint, on on Parkway Street. And then he, my auntie went, and then he moved out to on Copan Road, right over there by that social security office. I mean, that thing right there, then. My auntie come over there and took him out and put him in the hospital. And he he had a girlfriend there and and there wasn't nothing wrong with him. And then two days later, I went to see him. He was sitting up in the bed, and he and he died two days later, wasn't nothing wrong with him. And she jumped on me and said, what y'all do to my, her man? My auntie still ain't, and she live in, she moved in Grand Black, Perry Mae, a white. And he was my uncle's name Bobby Edwards. He worked there at Hurley Hospital. And I, but he he dead now. And because I want you to, a thorough, they told me, the nurse that, she asked me how I got out there. I took a bus and I had to walk from the hospital down to McDonald's because the bus wasn't even must come. So long, then she, then all the lights went out. She said, I advise you not to come out here, sir, by yourself. And I still hear that stuff ringing in my ear. And you talking about you can't do no business in Flint because of after Christmas and then after Thanksgiving. And what's with the, I just sound like them, the Middle East peoples. When the Israeli get sick and they gonna call this up, gonna deny them certain kind of medicine before they can die. And nobody, and the beat goes on. And chief, what green ought to go out there and investigate that junk? His name is Bobby Edwards. He walked with a limp because the mule down south kicked him when he was, and broke his leg and got a medal in his leg, but wasn't nothing wrong. He worked at Great Giant sometime, one time. In the meanwhile, my other, his wife live on Rankin Street. Anyway, stay tuned, America, and you investigate that junk for me.
Next public speaker, Madam Secretary.
Next speaker is Stanley Wood.
First is the city secretary. I want to appreciate, let you know how loud you are, and I want to say I appreciate that. Usually with Davina, you can't hear. So I'm relatively speaking, when I talk about this, that, you know, my time on earth is short, what's left. I don't plan on dying anytime soon, but it's inevitable, I'm gonna die one day. But I want you guys to know that I don't come here to this meeting for me. I come for my grandkids, for my children, for my other family members. I could just as easily sit at home and not be engaged, but I don't like the direction that the city is headed in. December seventeenth meeting, I was a little disappointed when I heard the vote to have everything go to special affairs and then have the council meeting. I kind of understand the reason for it, but why couldn't we have had all three committee meetings and then went straight to the council? It's the exact same thing. You're doing all this stuff from committees in the special affairs. To me, again, it looks like just an opportunity to limit the speaking of the public. So you went from five chances to speak to two chances to speak. I would rather have seen four chances, but that's just my opinion. The paid holidays, I'll address this again at special affairs, but I think they should just be aligned with the federal holidays. Whatever the federal employees work, that's what the city employees should work. You know, you're a government worker. There's plenty of times in my life that I had to go into work and dealt with nobody in eight-hour shift, but I had to because that was a requirement. Now, I could have, again, taken PTO and taken the time off. Councilwoman Johnson, I want to thank you for taking time out of your schedule to help feed the veterans. I read on a post that you guys were in a north end area and feeding some veterans and stuff. Veterans are close to my heart. I'm a veteran myself. I did eight years in the Navy. And I think there's some of the most, it's a word I'm looking for, almost like undeserving of people that do things for this country. So veterans mean a lot to me, especially the homeless ones. And I guarantee you, some of those homeless we got in Flint are definitely veterans.
Next public speaker, Madam Secretary.
Last speaker is Claire McClinton.
Yes, I just want to reiterate that we're getting into a new year. This council need to come together and address the needs of the residents. And I spoke earlier about how mistreated and demeaned and humiliated that we have felt over these last several months with the leadership of this council as a resident is just embarrassing. And here we are, a city known for its social justice character, and to be treated the way some of us has been treated is just inexcusable. Whatever the reasons they there was for for this, let's set that aside and go on and let Jerry Winfrey Carter give her an opportunity to address this residence, the needs of the residents, and maybe, just maybe, God forbid, unite this council. Unite this council with new leadership. Give her that opportunity. And I want to speak to the situation about giving a day off for employees. And with all due respect, Ms. Priestley, your your family member was an essential worker. I don't think she's talking about essential workers. So let's just sit back and try to do what's right for humanity. Financially, it may or may not work, but let's try to continue to stand up for the human condition, for human dignity. And again, we as residents who pay the bills around here, remember? Uh, do we pay the bills? Y'all work for us? Y'all, y'all act like you working, we work for you. No, you work for us. And Flint has a reputation of being a humane, social justice community. And we want to see that reflected in the decisions that's made down here. And we do not see that. So what we gotta do is try to do, it's not who who is, it's not the who, it's the what. What do we need to do in terms of electing leadership that's gonna turn the page and push the issue forward? Push our issues forward. Thank you.
Thank you. So that was the last public speaker? Yes. Seeing as how that was the last public speaker, it is now time for council response. Council members may respond. Once to all public speakers, only after all public speakers have spoken, individual council members' response shall be limited to two minutes. Is there anyone who wishes to speak during council response?
Madam Chair.
I'm sorry, councilwoman in the fourth ward.
Mr. Wood, one of the reasons why I proposed to eliminate the council, the the
Mr. Wood, one of the reasons why I proposed to eliminate the council, the, the committee meetings on that day is because our meetings have gone to two, three o'clock in the morning on that night. And it's just, it's just tiring and at eleven o'clock, I'm dead. You know, and I know that, uh, my other colleagues, those especially who have full-time jobs, I'm retired now. But those that have full-time jobs, getting up the next morning to go to work is very difficult when you're in a council meeting that long. And I thought, in order to prevent that, and our staff, because we have city attorneys here, we have our, our secretaries here, so that they can not stay up that late. That's why I proposed the, um, elimination of the committees. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who wishes to speak during public, I mean, excuse me, council response?
Madam Chair.
Councilwoman in the third ward.
Um, I'd like to apologize for my tardiness. I am also taking care of Aunt that has dementia and she's been up since two o'clock this morning. So, kind of, I was oversight that I seen that we had a meeting today. But once again, the young lady who spoke, we do work for the people. We, you are absolutely right. We work for you guys. So, anything that you need on all the councils, we have, um, we're willing to listen and try to do our best in assisting you and anything that you have done. And also, uh, Mr. Stanley, thank you. Mr. Stanley Woods, thank you for your, um, your comment and thank you for your appraisal. Uh, I'm gonna continue to work, uh, for veterans and any part of the third ward or any ward that needs my support. So, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak during council response? Seeing as how there's no one else who would like to speak during council response, I'll go ahead and just take a few moments here. I want to thank Councilwoman Johnson, Councilwoman Burns, Councilman Pfeiffer and Councilman, uh, Jared for at least allowing the conversation to continue in special affairs as it relates to, um, holidays here at the city and our employees. I definitely look forward to, um, having an open dialogue with the administration on Monday about this as we are moving forward. And that is all the time that I will take today. It's now time for the consent agenda. What is the pleasure of the body? Count. There is, um, a motion to move the council by the councilwoman in the fourth ward. Is there support? I'll support that. It's been supported by the councilwoman in the seventh ward. Are there separations?
Really?
Complete separation. Moving on to Resolution two five zero four one two. What, uh, reapportment Hurley Board of Hospital Managers Corinne Edwards. What is the pleasure of the body? Councilwoman in the fourth ward. There is a motion to move the council. Is there support?
Support.
Uh, it's been supported by the councilwoman in the sixth ward. Is there discussion? Councilman in the eighth ward.
So, we have been asking for weeks upon weeks, maybe mu, I mean, probably years for the, um, Hurley Board on residency requirements. I know that this is a city of Flint resident, but we have been asking for terms for who's a city resident, who's not a city resident, and we can't get anything. So, at this time, I'm not voting on this. So, uh, until we get the information that we ask for, um, I'm, I'm gonna, I'm gonna decline to vote on this one. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else in the first round of discussion?
Madam Chair.
Councilwoman in the sixth ward.
That is a legitimate concern that Councilman Pfeiffer, um, has stated. We should have that. And we should have, maybe if we, it's gonna probably overload special affairs, but send it to special affairs.
Are you making motion?
So, I'm gonna, because this should have been, I mean, this is ridiculous because people have moved out of the city, I know for fact.
Kim, before you make that motion, I want to talk.
Okay, you want to, okay. So, um, we, we do need that information before. I think we have to quit letting stuff slide because this is, we're, we get these resolutions and we don't get the information on them. Um, but they want it to be passed and it's not fair to us because this is our job to ask questions and to make sure it is okay. We don't know who all on that board and whose term, um, who's up, where they living at because some don't even live in the city anymore. And are we at the max that the number of city people that we can have on that board? And who are the people, uh, who are for the city? So, we need to know the makeup, uh, that that board is comprised of. So, I'm gonna yield the floor because I know you want to speak.
All right, thank you. Anybody else in the first round of discussion? Seeing as how there's no one else, I will go ahead and take my time. So, Mr. Pfeiffer, I do hear what you're saying. Um, and I do understand why you're taking that stance, even though, again, like you said, this is a Flint resident. We do have her resume. Ms. Winfrey Carter is not here, but we do have her resume. Um, and so, I am prepared to move this to council tonight, but if, uh, I know at one point in time there was requests made for, um, information about all of the boards that we currently have, right? And so, I will make that request again to find out who sits on all of the boards that we have as well as the requirements for all of the boards that we have. I will, uh, send that email to the city clerk. Uh, I see the secretaries are here as well, so they can also make note of that. We want to know, um, who is currently on all of the boards, whether their terms expire. Uh, but Hurley is more pressing right now because we will need to make a vote on that. So, if we could make sure that we have Hurley and that information for Hurley's board by Monday, that would be amazing. Um, with that said, I will yield my time going into the second round of discussion. Is there, councilman in the eighth ward?
Madam Clerk, if you're watching, uh, I think you are watching, that this is your responsibility. We've asked, Madam Clerk, we've asked you for months and months, if not longer. So, I, I'm gonna, I'm, I'm looking at the secretary now, but Madam Clerk, I know you're watching and I know you hear me. I need you to do your job and get us the addresses and get us who is a resident and who is not a resident of the Hurley Board. With that, I will make a motion to send this to special affairs.
There's a motion to send this resolution to special affairs. Is there support?
Support.
Moved and probably supported by the councilwoman in the sixth ward. Roll call vote, Madam Secretary. And that is to send resolution, the only resolution item here, two five zero four one two dash T, which is a reapportment to the Hurley Board of Hospital Managers Corinne Edwards to special affairs. Mr. L. Alamin is not in. Dr. Lewis? Ms. Johnson? Ms. Priestley? Ms. Winfrey Carter is not in. Ms. Burns?
Yes.
Ms. Machette?
Yes.
Mr. Pfeiffer?
Yes.
Mr. Jared?
Yes.
You have seven yes, zero no. Seven yes, zero no. That resolution moves to special affairs. There's a motion to adjourn by, uh, the council person in the eighth ward, supported by the council person in the sixth ward. Roll call, Madam Clerk, I mean, Madam Secretary. Dr. Lewis?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson? Ms. Priestley? Ms. Burns?
Yes.
Ms. Machette?
Yes.
Mr. Pfeiffer?
Yes.
Mr. Jared?
Yes.
You have seven yes, zero no. Seven yes, zero no. The time is six twenty-eight PM on Wednesday, December third. The Governmental Operations Committee meeting is adjourned.
Wow. An hour and a half. I mean, I, I got through a committee meeting in five minutes once. Remember that? I did, but that wasn't a, that was.